All right, good evening, everyone. Today is April 2nd. It is 6:00 PM and welcome, everyone, to the Curry County Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call this meeting to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is amendment and approval of the agenda. And we have two, I have two amendments that I've discussed with staff. Both can go on consent agenda. And that is adopt a job description for deputy roadmaster. We can put that at C under consent agenda. And then D would also fall under consent agenda, and that would be to promote Gary Wolford to deputy roadmaster. Those are the two amendments that I have.
If after our approval and amendment of the agenda, if we could, before Phil's presentation, just a quick, Amy?
Yeah, accommodate Amy. Sure.
Would like to do a quick announcement.
Sure. Anything else, Patrick?
No.
Jay?
No additions.
Any other changes? All right. And is there?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments and to approve the agenda tonight.
I'll second.
All right. Motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. So, Amy, why don't we, why don't we start with you and your presentation, or your announcement, I guess?
Thank you, commissioners. Good evening, commissioners, county council, Curry County residents and viewers. I'm Amy Gaddis-Parker, and I'm the victim's advocate for the Curry County Juvenile Department. I wanted to take this time to let the public know that next week, April 6th through the 12th of 2025, is the National Crime Victims Rights Week. I'm here to raise awareness in our county about the victims' rights and services that are not only available during NCV-RW but throughout the year. This year's theme for NCV-RW is kinship. So this is a call to action to recognize that shared humanity should be at the center of supporting all survivors and victims of crimes. Kinship is a state of being with survivors that drives vital connections to services' rights and healing. Kinship is where victim advocacy begins. Further, I'm here to ask that we all come together and honor crime victims and survivors during the 2025 National Crime Victims Rights Week. This annual observance challenges us to build a world where every connection built through kinship between the survivors, the advocates, and the communities holds the potential to heal. It asks us to ensure that resources are available to all survivors and that we show up for one another with empathy and intention. NCV-RW began in 1981 to honor victims and survivors of crimes, raise awareness of victims' rights and services, and recognize the dedication of those who work with the crime victims. Anyone who would like additional information on NCV-RW or victim services are welcome to contact me. I'm Amy Gaddis-Parker, and I'm the victim's advocate in the juvenile department. The DA's office also has a victim's advocate for adult cases. I'm going to leave you guys some information. My phone number is listed on the county website, but it's (541) 247-3236, or it's amy.parker@currycountyoregon.gov. And I thank you, guys. We just want to bring some awareness. Curry County hasn't done the week that I know of. I did a little research, and Director Lang is very into victims' rights. We've worked with the DA Spanzel and his office, and thank you, guys, for letting us take this time and let everybody just know that the victims have rights, and we have our advocates here for Curry.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
And thanks for everything you do.
Yeah.
Next up is a presentation. This is regarding a cybersecurity summit from our chief information officer, Phil Dixon. Phil?
Thank you, Commissioner Alcorn, Commissioner Hollinger, Commissioner Tros, Council Fitzgerald. I'd like to kind of give you an update on the progress of the cybersecurity summit. We've been working on the cybersecurity summit now since last July, and we're just about ready to have it go off next month, May 13th, 14th, and 15th at the fairgrounds. And I kind of wanted to give you a little update of what the summit is designed for, answer any questions you may have, and also kind of let you know some of the folks that are going to be coming. So I had a chance to have a continuing education class last summer, and during that class, I was able to take part. One of the individuals there was the Region 10 Director for CISA. And we had a conversation multiple as this class went on for five days. And one of the things I learned was that CISA has a concern, especially at the time of the conversation, with water districts. There's something going along with water being a kind of a vulnerable, soft-belly target for our nation, and evidently, there's been some things that he couldn't get into that have happened to water districts that were alarming, mostly caused by cyber intrusion from bad actors. So the gist of the conversation was a concern that this individual have of trying to reach and get in front of every water district possible to let them know of the resources that are available to them to enable them to strengthen their IT environment to prevent attackers from getting in. I came back and I approached Mr. Fitzgerald and asked him, would it be okay if we used a room in the county and perhaps bring all the water districts in at one time, thereby saving Mr. Ross multiple trips back? Mr. Fitzgerald thought it would be a good idea to invite all special districts. I think his exact words was what government should be doing. So with that mandate, I went to work on it. We slowly have been approaching every special district. We're just kind of focusing initially on fire, water, but now we've got every special district within Curry County, every special district within Coos County, and most special districts within Del Norte County have personally been invited via a phone call and an email, and then follow-up emails to those individuals, letting them know how important this is. Some of the nice things about the cyber summit is who's coming. We have some very brilliant people that this is what they do professionally that have going to take time and money out of their schedules to come down to Curry County and get in front of all the special districts at one time. Since it kind of grew from just being water departments to being multiple organizations, I'm going to scroll down a little bit here. This is one of the ones talking about just the cyber disruptions that are happening within water districts, how many across the nation have been targeted. And what it does is it institutes fear within your citizens. Is my water safe to drink? You might have seen different things come across the news of boil orders or people actually draining their tanks. Well, if you add two and two together, why did that happen? Maybe there was too much chemical mixed into the water treatment. Something might have happened that somebody got in a hold of that system, and it made it to where the citizens couldn't drink water. Well, as we continue down the list of special districts within the county, water just being one. Let's scroll down to the next slide here. Also, you may have heard about with school districts, the Power School hack that recently happened. Power School is a software program that many districts use to communicate the progress of the students to the parent. This system was hacked via a cyber attack, and all the data that Power School contained was now open on the open market and can be found. So it doesn't take much, and sometimes school districts especially since COVID, because oftentimes, from my research, there was a huge ramp-up to provide Zoom classes and online education. So you had all this expense being spent to provide these resources to kids. Well, every time you open up a new hole in your environment, you open up also a door that an attacker can get in. So this is also a big concern from cybersecurity professionals, is how vulnerable our schools could be, and just some of the things we're going to focus on during the summit is just kind of the starting things they can do to make a difference. What can they do, kind of the low-hanging fruit, multi-factor authentication, good backup procedures. Those two things alone can make a huge difference into how quickly your organization can recover from a ransom or attack. You yourself gone through it, you know, Mr. Alcorn, Mr. Tros, you saw how terrible it was here at Curry County, and it was like the clock just stopped. So we're trying to make sure that these individuals who are working in special districts, and we back up and say, I realize most special district leaders are elected officials. They work a whole other job. They might not do IT for a living, and they might not know the ins and outs of what these hackers can do very quickly. Our goal with the summit is to introduce them to state leaders and federal officials that can offer assistance and aid and open up grant opportunities for them. And that is one of the things that we're definitely going to be highlighting. Another one here is our library district, also vulnerable, not necessarily a particular one, but there are vulnerabilities whenever you're offering computer services to your constituents. It opens a door. And here's one right here, Seattle officials got a ransomware attack, and it was over a million dollars at the time everything was spent, just on getting this, just the Seattle libraries back in business. Another special district we look at is our ports. Every port up and down the coast has been invited, Brookings, Gold Beach, Port Orford, Charleston, all the way down. We will have, and we have had lots of people registering from these organizations. These are all targets by cyber organizations, because not only do they have the chance of picking up money from these organizations, they also inflict chaos, and they cause disruptions. And we are pretty much in a state of conflict and have been for a while, and it's a big target. Other districts, healthcare. We have a healthcare district here. That particular portion of the bottom, 66% of all healthcare organizations say patient care has been disrupted by some sort of cyber attack. There was years ago, the WannaCry one that hit England, peoples were in the operating room going through procedures, and they lost lights and power and the ability for those computerized machines. Vulnerable, yes. So our goal, along with health districts and the other districts I mentioned, is to put them in front of professionals that can offer them assistance in helping them improve their cybersecurity posture. Fire districts, too, we're having a big emphasis on fire, and we're taking a little different approach there. Not only are we going to offer the, all the fire districts to come into one facility, the fairgrounds, but as I was working with Chip, the emergency operations manager from Coos Bay, or Coos County, rather, he mentioned, I think he is the captain of one of the Coquille or Myrtle Point firehouse up there, and he made a comment that struck me. He says, Phil, I don't even know who the other captain is. If he's Myrtle Point, he didn't know who was at Coquille. So we kind of thought it would be nice, too, realizing the seismic zone that we happen to live in, one day we will face a big shake here, and when that happens, my goal would, the chief of Myrtle Point would know who the chief of Gold Beach is. What kind of equipment do you have? What type of apparatus can you bring to bear? There's going to be lots of things that we're going to need in a very quick time, and it will be a while before the state can reorganize and come to the aid of Curry County, because there's going to be massive damage up and down the coast. So along with the goal of cybersecurity, we're wanting to put these same types of districts in their own breakout sessions. They can have a chance to put a face to the name, an email address, a phone number, and that way, we kind of hope that these conversations will continue. The next district I'd like to talk to you about is our sanitation district, our wastewater, also targeted. Every one of these government districts are run by elected boards, and our goal is to let them know there are tremendous resources available from the state and federal levels to help them improve their cybersecurity posture. This right here is just some of the speakers that so far, and there's still another half dozen on top of this, who are going to take time out of their schedule and come be here onsite to present to the citizens of Curry, Coos, and Del Norte County. We have Mike Finch, you know, he was instrumental in helping get Curry County back online after the ransomware attack here. He is the CIO of Lang County. CTO of Lang Council of Governments is Heidi Leva. She's also going to be one of our guest speakers here. Darris is the CIO of Coos County. Jason works for CISA. He's going to be coming down. Leslie also works for CISA. John Jones is a CISSP, which is a cybersecurity professional, working for ElCog. We have Christopher Ross. This is the gentleman here who is the Region 10 Director for CISA. We have Cinnamon Alban. She is the Deputy State Director, CISO for the state of Oregon. And then we have another half dozen people on top of this that will also be here. As the registrations are starting to come in, we have registrations now from the CIO of Jackson County, the CIO of Douglas County. We have lots of people coming from across the state to Curry County to work with all of our special districts and let them know they're not alone. There's people here that want to help, and there's resources available. So the goal would be is these small sessions, library session or a health district session, you're going to have a panel of experts there that are going to listen to your specific questions about how to improve your specific district and offer your resources, contact information, phone numbers, perhaps even grant information. I do realize this won't happen all during that same summit. The summit is designed to, this is my card, this is the phone number, this is how to contact these people, this is starting the conversation up, and it will be a continual conversation. I have, I went through a list today, working with our Economic Development Department, of just some of the organizations that have signed up so far. I don't, I didn't bring any specific names of individuals, but some of them, we have several from Del Norte County, different groups coming up. We have Coquille tribal leader is going to be here, Douglas County, Coos Forest is going to be, Brookings Harbor ISD, Lang Loy Water, Port Orford, Lang Loy ISD, Lynn Benton ISD, South Coast ESD, Naseka Beach Water, Lang Council of Governments, Charleston Fire, Oregon State Police, Oregon Water Resource Department, City of Port Orford's Gold Beach Police Department, Port Orford Library District, Wetterburn Sanitary District, Coos County, Oregon, Jackson County, Oregon, and Oregon Department of Administrative Services, just to mention a few. So we're expecting a good turnout at the fairgrounds. It's going to start Tuesday afternoon around noon. Registration will start about 11 o'clock. We're working closely with a couple of nice groups within Curry County, one being the Seroptimists and the other being Rotary. Both of those groups I've had meetings with, and they both offered us bodies to help put on this event, realizing it's going to take a lot of people to put on a very nice event. And our goal is when people leave and they have spent the time and effort and money to come to this event, that they walk away energized and feeling that it was money well-spent. Other than that, do you have any questions about the summit I can answer?
How many total people do you think?
We've had estimates.
Right now, just registered or whatever, however?
Right now, we're pushing 40 registered, but from what I understand, talking to Economic Development Department, and she's, and they're basing this off previous events, usually the majority of registration happen between two and three weeks before the event.
Yeah.
So having this amount already this far away is uncommon. So based off that, we've had estimates in the 125, some going as high as 200. I don't know. It's my first, my first time, so.
Well, you've got some big names on there, so.
There are some big names on there, and we hope that, we would like to invite in our commission to come over there and have a chance to meet these individuals, talk to some vendors. I made it a point, for the sponsorship of this event, we did not spend any county dollars on. IT has no budget for this. So I've been working hard since July of just attracting sponsors, and I made a decision at the time to only ask people that we do business with. We have a charter, our communications provider, they're stepping up, and they're going to be one of the sponsors. Ricotta Cameras, our Cisco vendor, people that we do business with have come up and said, yes, we're going to take part in that one, and some of them to the tune of several thousand dollars. So we're keeping it on a very tight budget, realizing that we didn't know exactly how much money we would have, but we will have enough to make sure everybody has a nice meal, everybody has a chance to spend time with each other, some networking sessions, and hopefully, everybody have a really good experience when they walk in from here and have the information that they need in the event they do have a cyber incident. This is what to happen. And I'd like to wrap up by saying that the last day of the summit, we're actually going to do an assessment. So the summit's kind of geared of, we realize that people from these boards might not have the IT background to understand terminology and lingo. So the goal for the first two days of the session is just to kind of get them understanding what cybersecurity terms that they're going to often hear, and the importance of how they bear into their environment. At the end of that particular education, so to speak, we're going to sit down and do an assessment with every special district. It's not something to get you in trouble or go, oh, got you. This is going to be a moment where we can have a baseline. So your water district right now, if you were looking from a score from 1 to 100, and it came in at a 58 or 60, which could be an average score, what these professionals are going to do is look at that score and spend 10, 15 minutes with each individual district and say, this is what I would recommend you look at first. This is what I'd recommend you look at second. And there's even spots on there, like we're having a session, when you're dealing with an IT vendor, let's just say, a lot of these districts might contract out their IT services. This particular, our CISO, Cinnamon Alban, right here, one thing that she's big on is making sure that these districts know to add a rider in their contract. What does that rider cover? That rider covers if you're using Phil's IT service to manage your environment, and Phil's IT service happens to be hacked or going through a cyber attack in itself, if you don't add the rider on your contract specifying that I must notify you that I've been hacked, then that's a very dangerous, precarious space to be in. So she's going to have some time to spend chatting with special districts on their contracts, making sure these things are in the document that your IT provider hands you to sign, make sure that these things are also covered. So it's just best practices. There's going to be sections in there that we can actually help identify key vendors, ones that have gone through the vetting process by the state. Those are always nice to have, so at least you have peace of mind, because when it comes to these districts, healthcare, water, fire, schools, library, a lot of them are very computer-dependent, and their decisions come very quickly, and boards change. And our goal is to make sure that we are able to send information back home to each district with a list of phone numbers in the event of you suspect intrusion in your environment, call this number. Let an expert come in and look over your shoulder, because it's often good to catch it early, and you can do damage control before they actually encrypt the data, once the data gets encrypted.
Well, you know, Phil, after the, after we faced a cyber attack, I was invited to go and speak at multiple events in Oregon and in other states. And when I would go and speak at those events and tell our story, basically, usually the event concluded with an opinion from everyone that we need to have exactly this, what you're putting on, that, that communities need to organize these types of events, because this is really a foundational step to, to deter, prevent, and protect these, these cyber environments. So thank you for.
Thank you.
Taking the lead on this and organizing all of this. I think the fairgrounds is a great venue with some of the improvement that's been done there, and I think you're going to, you're going to have an event that's, that's probably going to, going to be reoccurring, so great job.
I thank you for your support. Without your support, I couldn't have done it. Commissioner Hollinger, Commissioner Alcorn, Commissioner Tros, Council, Fitzgerald.
Yeah, one, one thing I'd like to just recommend, let's put out an invite to CIS. They have a cybersecurity team as well, the county's insurance provider.
Oh, do they?
Because they're always constantly doing risk assessment, and that's kind of one of those services that they provide to our county here is cybersecurity risk assessment. So I think that maybe be somebody that would be good, good to, good to come down here and at least see what we have going on and see that we're trying to make the correct steps continuing going forward after, after the attack we have.
Gold Beach and Brookings, they, they insure those people, too, so that'd be a good, that'd be a good interaction. That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hollinger, just like this conversation right here, I've had this conversation, not to this level, but to other individuals, as we've been discussing, the ITs or the cybersecurity summit. Every time I had this conversation, I have a comment like that. You need to involve or contact this organization.
Sure, yeah, that's great.
Talking with Leslie here, she recommended reaching out to the watershed districts and councils in our area, and that's one that I hadn't thought of until she recommended that I reach out, and I specifically reached out to both Coos, Curry, and Del Norte County.
Yeah.
So any individuals or organizations that come to mind that you think would be good people to have or good organizations to take part in our summit, we definitely want to.
Yeah, and one last comment I want to make to everybody who's, who's listening is that Phil and his IT team, since the cyber attack, so Phil, you came in after the cyber attack, correct?
A few minutes after the cyber.
Yeah. So I just want to say that he and his team have done a fantastic job with IT around here, not only getting everybody within the county educated and testing our education on a, seems like a pretty regular basis with, you know, emails to try to get us to recognize that are, that would be fraudulent or phishing emails. But then just the work you guys are doing constantly with all of the departments here, making sure we're all protected. Thank you for what you guys are doing.
Thank you. I'll tell my team that. Thank you very much. They'll appreciate that.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
I just want to say, Phil, that a lot of these people, I mean, they're not going to have Vietnam flashbacks when they come here, because a lot of these people stepped up and helped us. I'm looking at them like, they're not going to be happy to see me.
I will share something that's interesting as far as I think, because most of the time there's a cybersecurity summit someplace. It's in Eugene or Portland or Salem, and it's at the Hilton, nice convention centers and beautiful hotels. We don't necessarily have that in Curry County, but what we do have here are beaches that are close to the fairgrounds. It's some of the most beautiful rivers in the world. So we've been watching, I was studying the tide tables months ago, and I discovered that during the cybersecurity summit, low tide is at like 9:00, 8:30, 5:00 in the morning. So on the last day of the summit, we're going to put an invitation out to anyone who wants to meet at the fairgrounds at 7:00 AM. We're going to carpool down to Cape Sebastian, and we're going to hike Cape Sebastian and come down on the beach there. And then we're going to, I worked in with a little bit with a search and rescue, and they're going to have a couple of guys there with drones and taking pictures of the group. Because if you talk to everybody, most of these conventions take place in the hotel, and they never even have a chance sometimes to walk outside. And the thought of having a hike in Cape Sebastian, and maybe even while they're here, do a jet boat trip up the Rogue River, people are excited to come to Curry, because it does offer things that those other places can't, and I think we're going to try to highlight that.
Yeah, that's a great touch.
Also, Phil, I just want to say you look extremely dapper, professional. Not sure what you've done, but looking great.
I think. I'll leave as I blush. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Job, Phil.
All right. Moving forward in the agenda, next up is public comments. Before we do public comments, I want to, I've got several speaker slips that were filled out here. So I want to remind everyone that public comments are limited to three minutes, and I will ask everyone not to name county employees by name. You can certainly name us, you can certainly criticize us, but our county employees come to work every day, they work hard, and I'm not going to tolerate them being attacked or belittled or demeaned. That's not going to happen. So please keep that in mind. Please pay attention to your time, and, and I also want to encourage the public who might be watching this at home, that this is really an opportunity for anyone to step up to the microphone, they can say anything that they want. The information coming from the microphone hasn't been fact-checked, it hasn't been verified, so before you jump on social media and you start posting that something is factual, it may not be. And please do your own research before you do that. So, that being said, moving on to public comments, first up is, I think it's Yvonne?
Okay, do I have to go up there and be on that microphone?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you got to speak at the microphone, because we, we have to record it, and Natasha has to document it, and.
Okay. Well, Yvonne Pettyjohn, and I'm here because I live up Hunter Creek, have been forever. And so there's the bridge, I don't know if, okay, it's, you cross the bridge by Tamsas, and then you can go, take a right and go up Hunter Creek, or you can go straight, go up to Hunter Creek Heights, or you can turn left and go to Matira Road. Well, on the corner of that bridge is a area that is, it's opened up like that much, I would say. So it's like I would imagine a metal for expansion or something, and then the pavement of the road, well, coming down the creek where I live, and you turn to go onto that bridge, it cracks the tire every time. So sometimes I found myself going on the other lane, if nobody's there, of course, so I avoid that. So I hope that, you know, something can be done about it.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you. Is your father, was he Mike?
He was.
That guy was fantastic.
Money something?
Oh, yeah, I used to come to the meetings. Sometimes it would be just Bob Van Leeuwen and me, and your father was always asking the commissioners as they would try to think of what ways about money and saving it when the golden goose started.
Yeah, I learned it from him.
And the golden goose.
Bob Van Leeuwen taught me how to cut meat, too.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he had a shot.
I know. I know, it was amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Dee Ragsdale.
Dee Ragsdale with, um, with, uh, Gold Beach. I live here in Gold Beach. Um, so I, in less than a little bit, over a month, we're going to be asked to vote in our county on a levy. And I have concerns because I haven't seen much data and I want to be an informed and educated voter before this levy becomes before us. And I also want to talk a little bit about some things that concern me budgetarily and regarding, um, the levy too. So, um, two, actually it was about two and a half years ago, I came before the board. It was late, it was October of 2022, so it's like, anyway. It was about ARP monies, American Rescue Fund funds, and that's COVID release funding. And my concern was that I could account for records of how that money was allocated and expended from records that I received from the county, but there was some missing data. And so I was concerned about that. And particularly though, there was a $1,801,000 and some change that was transferred to the sheriff's department for the jail. In addition, for dispatch, there was about 820,000 that was allocated to dispatch and apparently expended at that point with the data that I was able to, um, obtain with, through county records request. Um, there was also an allocation of $250,000 for new vehicles. So, two years later, approximately, we find ourselves with the US Department of Treasury asking what happened to that money? Give us some detail. And so I read in the February report from your finance director, the accounting of that money. What my concern continues to be is that it's like you can pay a vendor for service, but you don't know as an employee, as a county resident, what that service was. So that transfer to the jail for 1,800,000, the 820,000 that was spent for dispatch, the 250,000 for vehicles, plus other things, um, there's no specificity as to how that money was spent, actually spent. So I don't know what the treasury, you know, how they're dealing with that because we don't hear, you know, we all heard the big blow up that it was, you know, they came out the door asking for how it was spent. So I also see that, through a public records request, I'm sorry, um, that, uh, that there was some discussion about funding for a grant from the federal government for the jail, for improvements to the jail. So we just apparently, but we don't know as voters, spent one, you know, the 1.8 million for the jail. So I don't know what that grant is for that you're proposing and how that dovetails with what was or was not spent for the jail. So now, um, you know, I, I know you guys are having issues. What I read in the paper about, and I love the paper, I love the Curry County Reporter, I write two articles a week, so, you know, I support the paper. I would certainly like to see more information coming to us so that we can be an informed, um, county to help with these votes. I mean, I, right now, I, I vote for taxes. I'm not tax averse if I know what that money's going for and the results. So it's you all are trusted and trusted with, um, integrity and, and how we spend, how you spend our money that we have provided in taxes. So I'm concerned that all these little squabbles, I guess they're not little, but between the different, the sheriff's office and all of you and, and, but let's just really get down to business. Tell us what that money is going to be used for. Tell us how you spent the money previously so that we know that you're not double dipping or that things weren't done. Uh, yeah, I, I just would like to know. So I'm an informed and educated voter when that comes up during the elections.
Dee, I'm gonna
That's
Say you've got more time.
Time. I know. Okay, okay. So it's mainly the specificity. Tell us how. And I came early on so that you have time to think about it and get that word out and maybe through the paper, other ways. I don't do Facebook much, I don't trust it. So just however you want to communicate that, on your website, how is that money going to be spent? And how is it spent in prior, the prior fundings that you received? Okay, thank you for your time.
If I could just cut in.
Can I, I would like to
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, so you can stay for a second. So, um, you usually don't try to respond, but this is a, this is a question that, um, it befuddled me when I came in in 2023, right? So it was after what you had seen in 2022. Um, and one of the first things is, uh, so when I left the county in 2017, um, we had roughly just under, I think, 115, uh, full-time employees in the county for all departments, across all departments. And so when I came in as the county commissioner in, in February of 23, one of the first things I did is asked for the org chart so I could find out, you know, where, where are we at? And at that time, uh, we were just shy of 100 and, well, no, we were at like 151 FTEs. And my question was, how could we have that much of an increase when we have had no increase in revenues? So then that's when the digging started. Um, and so I can just relate to you some of what I had, was able to kind of put together. So initially, um, you know, uh, initially, when, when the governor allowed road funds to be used for patrol, there was a, it was a slight amount being used and it was controversial at the time. It was just over $200,000 to be put into road patrol. And, um, over that time period, what had happened is they had started removing road patrol dollars, general funded road patrol dollars, out of road patrol and putting them into the general fund for other agents, for other areas, backfilling that with road funds to the tune of when I came in 2023, 100% of patrol at 3.1 million was being funded by road patrol, by road department funds. So you had 3.1 million dollars of, those are one-time funds, once you lose them, you lose them, right? It's a, it's in a big safety account or savings, right? A big investment account. Anyways, on top of that, they were funding the jail with one-time use COVID dollars as, along with other operational areas. And, I mean, obviously, these are decisions that were made prior to us coming, most of, well, everybody here. And, um, that's how I was able to determine we are in a really bad place because that money's, that money ran out. So we were essentially $5 million, close to just over $5 million upside down going into the 2425 budget, realizing that's where the 31% reduction in budget came from was from that. Now, had we not used any road funds, we still used 1.2 million dollars in road funds to offset road patrol. We, we, we put, there was 1.2 million dollars put in there. Um, now had that, you know, the full amount been reduced, we would have been cutting, you know, closer to, to the mid 40% to get, um, to, to get to budget zero. So, um, I, I know that's not exactly particular, right? But I hope it gives you some insight on what, what, how we were able to come to the realization and find that we were all, we were all incredibly upside down. Now, obviously, it didn't help that the, at the time, the county was two years behind in reconciling the, the ledgers. Um, and, and so the, they were, they were operating off of one-time dollars and estimates. And so that's when we, you know, it was like we, we can't continue to operate in that fashion. Um, and so, you know, I hope that at least provides a little bit of a lens on how we got from where we were to where we, to where we, you know, we were essentially operating on a, what I, it's just a paper floor. It was a false floor of funding that was never going to be, it was never going to last and ultimately hurt us, hurt us all. And in the midst of all of that, created division that you discussed, um, because, you know, uh, when, when budgets are reduced and, and, uh, people get upset and, and then things are, it's hard to recover from, so.
And also, Dee, Dee, if I can, you have really good questions and those questions need to be answered, especially regarding the levy and the information surrounding it, what that money was used for, how it was spent, those types of things. And really, the best person to answer that is the sheriff. But he doesn't participate in government, he hasn't come to a meeting.
I have, oh, I'm sorry.
And, and, and that's part of our frustration too, certainly part of mine. And, um, and I, I would also like to know statistical information. Calls for service, how many are, how many are going unanswered? How many are there? When, where, how? What's the jail population? What's the, I mean, I have so many questions regarding statistical information. Every time I ask, I'm accused of just being a big city cop and picking on the poor small town sheriff, but if he's not capable of doing that, then we need to find someone who is.
And to answer your question about the jail funds, so initially that was, the, what you mentioned, the 1.8, that was used for operations. The grant that we are proposing, that we put in for, is for infrastructure. It's to update and improve the jail infrastructure because those one-time funds were used for operations, which
It's, it's specific. I went through the jail with our maintenance guys and we have a specific list and we priced, you know, each item like, oh, there's, in fact, like we were looking at today, the, the jail, uh, uh, bunks are really old and they've, they're got asbestos paint, all kinds of, it just, it's a very old jail and, and the building is, the building is, is compromised. And so that money that we're looking for from the federal appropriation will be specifically for direct repairs to the jail itself to, to, um, make it run a little bit more efficiently. With the idea, my, my thought would be that you would be able to then like streamline some, some labor costs as well if you have a more organized, um, incarceration facility.
So we're not trying to double dip?
No, okay, yeah. And can I just, really quick, one second. Um, Moss Adams did a, a report, an audit that I don't know has ever received the light of day and it was on the roads department, funding and potential funding solutions, apparently, that I read in a newspaper article. Um, but I don't know that specifically, again, you know, what you read. Uh, I hope that it was something that you can use, looking at funding solutions.
It, it actually wasn't. The problem was that, that the audit was part of the, of the, um, of the political gamesmanship between the sheriff's department and the road department. And the information that had been provided to Moss Adams by the road department was, was inaccurate. It, 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 it was, the idea was, behind the audit was to predict how long it would take to run out of, to run out of road funds at the current usage, assuming that the sheriff was maxing his takeout and assuming that the road department was, it was, it was like a race to the bottom. Both, both sides were spending as much of the money as they could. And when I looked at it, there are things like in the, in the list of, you know, we're replacing, uh, loader, a 950 loader, something like that, 924, I think, it was three years old, we're going to replace that. You, you don't do that in the heavy equipment business. You especially don't do it when you're the government. You, you make your stuff last.
Okay. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dee. Next up is Andre Bay.
Ted, Commissioner Hollinger, it was nice to meet you before the meeting. I reiterate my appreciation for your, uh, public service to the county.
Thank you.
Um, I heard you was in DC around March 1st?
I think, yeah, March, yeah, March 1st is right in the middle of me being there. Correct.
Yeah, that was a great day. Um, as far as I'm concerned, President Trump signed in an executive order March 1st. And I'm just going to cover just a little bit of it. You all know about it, but I want to put it out there for the public. And, uh, the executive order is the immediate expansion of the, of American timber production. And the purpose is the production of timber, lumber, paper, bioenergy and other wood products, timber products, um, is critical to our nation's well-being. Timber production is essential for crucial human activities like construction and energy production. And it goes on about disasters, wildfires, um, has a directive here for the first year, uh, covers, uh, streamlined fermenting and Endangered Species Act. So I just wanted to put that out there for those that watch. I know you guys, uh, are on it. What I want to know is, uh, can we expect an update tonight, maybe, on, uh, how this is affecting the county and what you have been up to?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have to leave, but I will watch.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have an update.
So that's all I was really hoping for. I know you both have been working on that hard.
Yep.
And I haven't heard an update. That's, that's all I got.
You got?
Yeah.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And I'll watch online.
Thanks, Andre.
Thanks, Commissioner.
All right, next up is El, is it Elvira, Elvera? No?
No. I'm here bored to observe this.
You don't want to speak?
No.
Are you taking any last minute ones?
Yeah. Go ahead, you're up next, ma'am. Please, please state your name.
Laura Peterson, Phoenix, Arizona.
Uh, Phoenix, Arizona is my, my last permanent address, which is registered on my, uh, state ID.
You have three minutes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Um, the reason I'm taking a couple of moments of the community's time is to bring a matter of, uh, what I would believe might be of public interest and may be concerned to, uh, official bodies. I had been brought into Curry County and I, I brought, I'd been persuaded to come into Curry County through a woman who purported to provide domestic violence services. I was in California at the time. This woman, uh, her name is Cherry Salter. She runs a, she's registered with the Secretary of State as running a domestic agency, not a domestic violence agency, which is what she purported to be providing services for. Her location was Brookings, Oregon. I, my vehicle encountered some equipment difficulties on the way to meet with her. She had convinced me that she could provide certain services such as a place to park my RV for several weeks while I searched for employment. She had stated that she could provide the ability to fix the vehicle through a, uh, certain business that is, uh, has, also has towing abilities. And the culmination of this was to get me into Brookings across state lines. I used my Good Sam membership to do so. And, um, she had me parked in an area immediately that was a towaway zone, which alarmed me because the security personnel was very verbally abusive. She then had me towed to another towaway zone, which the security there was very professional. I truly appreciated them. But she then had me towed to another area, which was not agreed upon. Um, I had agreed to be towed a block down the road to an area she said that I would be able to stay, uh, for two weeks while I got my vehicle fixed. She proceeded to tow me several lights up a hill and out of town and parked my vehicle across the road from a homelessness camp. And I believe her intent was to try to make me look like a homeless individual, which by itself is not a crime, but there is a certain climate in Brookings towards the homeless people that is not conducive to any type of healing for a domestic violence victim. any type of healing for a domestic violence victim. The only reason I am able to speak as I am through all this, because what she put me through was horrific, is because I have training in mental health as well. I've previously worked for Arizona Healthcare Contract Management Services, providing daily living skills and serving in group homes.
Ma'am, your three minutes is, is up. You'll need to conclude.
There is a conflict of interest currently going on with a situation involving my dogs and a certain individual who works at Brookings in a humane society. And the reason I say is a conflict of interest is because my dogs were wrongly accused. And I would hope that the commissioners would take a moment to look into this because there is evidence that there is a conflict of interest. And I would like to resolve the matter peaceably and I would like to be able to get on with my life without interrupting the community any more than it already has been over this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that will conclude, uh, public comments. Commissioner comments? Patrick?
Um, well, I don't know if I want to talk about the forest stuff now, or do we want to wait till the end?
Under updates?
Yeah, maybe just do that on, I'll just do it under updates.
Okay.
But other than that, no, I don't have any, any comments at this time.
Mr. Trost?
Uh, no, just, uh, you know, appreciate the participation and the questions, uh, that were posed today and, um, some require some follow-up and we'll work on that.
All right, next up, I have none. Uh, next up is consent, or, yes, consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Yeah, and I'll second.
All right, motion of second, all in favor?
Yes.
I want to say, before I vote, that I'm very happy for Gary.
Yeah.
He's been doing a really good job.
Been a long time.
He's been there for a long time. He's, he's a really, really, you know, foundational piece of that road department and it's a good, it's good, it's, I'm, I'm really happy for him, so.
Yeah, he does, he does answer the phone. I've called him several times at really hot hours and he does.
So, with that, I will vote yes.
All right. So, motion of second, yes, and I'm a yes, so passes three to zero. All right, next up is a public hearing. And, uh, this is a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners conducted pursuant to OAS 203.045, uh, procedure for adopting an ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes three to zero. The hearing is now open. It is 6:53 PM. The ordinance shall be read by title only unless a full reading is requested by a member of the board. There's no, no request for a full meeting. So, Section 1, uh, this ordinance shall be known as Ordinance Number 25-02 and may be cited as Ordinance Amending Article 2, Division 1 of Curry County Code to Reflect Amendments to the Franchise Terms. Do we have any public comments? Hearing, no public comments. Can I get a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the ordinance amending Article 2, Division 1 of Curry County Code to Reflect Amendments to the Franchise Terms?
So moved.
And I'll second.
All right, motion of second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and I'm a yes, so motion passes three to zero. This hearing is now closed at 6:54 PM. That concludes the public hearing. Now, we'll move on to discussion action items. Seeing none on the agenda, we'll move forward to, uh, public safety update. And there is no one here from the sheriff's office, so there is no public safety update. Next will be, uh, Director of County Operations update.
Um, let's see, first of all, I'd just like to do a quick, um, public notice about committee vacancies that we have available right now here in Curry County. We've got the compensation board, that's, uh, we have position two and position three are, are available for that. Those are three-year terms, if anyone's interested. The fair board currently has three positions open, position three, position four, and position five. Those are each three-year terms as well. Forestland Urban Interface Classification Committee, that's four-year terms, that's position one, position two, and position three are available. Um, Planning Commission, that is a four-year term. There's a, there's two north county positions, two central county positions, and one south county, south county position open at this time. Transit Advisory Committee, um, that's a three-year term and we have three at-large positions available for that. Um, those would all be very helpful if people would, would take the time to be involved in that because we need, um, to get public input so we can make sure that we're going in the direction that the public is wanting us to. Um, other than that, let's see. Um, as far as the basic director of operations update, there were numerous road failures, uh, throughout the county over the last month. Road Department Office personnel are working overtime to record and report damages for potential reimbursement. At this point, the near-term charges are approaching $1.5 million, which will be paid from road reserves. Number two, our office was informed last week that the sheriff's office will be represented by a new union, the Fraternal Order of Police. We have not been informed of the date of change of it from Teamsters 223. Um, we've enjoyed working with, with Teamsters, uh, especially here in the last few months. Um, number three, last week, we met with Jennifer Boardman, ODOT Regional Transit Coordinator. She was following up on some items that were noted by ODOT in its recent compliance review of Curry Public Transit. Uh, just to bring people up to date, there will be an RFP, there is an RFP out right now, request for proposal, so that, uh, as, as a part of Curry Transit, uh, renewing its contract with the county and other, other agencies that may be interested in, in bidding on that route as well. Um, let's see, four, Commissioner Hollinger and I met with a representative of the county's insurer, CIS, and discussed the county's recent rate increase last week. The increase is about 27%, much higher than the state average, which I'm informed by, uh, Bureau of Department was, uh, normally about 6% this year. The increase is related to the numerous settlements and payouts made on behalf of the county over the last five years. We asked for clarification on how the county can work with CIS to assure that policies and procedures endorsed by CIS to limit potential liability are followed by all county departments. While most departments are bound by and follow county personnel rules, some do not. Making sure that all county departments work closely with our insurer and according, and according to policies acceptable to that insurer, CIS, including our own personnel rules, will save the county money. Since our meeting, we have been looking at ways to limit insurance costs as this increase will materially affect the county's ability to deliver services over the next year. As a first step, we have asked that all departments review their vehicle use, document the type, extent, and frequency of use to determine if there is a way to reduce coverage requirements. Moving into budget season, it is important to locate any possible cost savings in advance so you know what funding is available for the county. And finally, last, my last note, I talked to Larry Van Zant today from Gold Beach Main Street, who is promoting, uh, this year's, uh, Legends Festival. And that's September 26th, I think. That's, that's when it starts. They're looking for, um, some money to help them finance the, uh, the entertainment that they've got planned to bring into Gold Beach and have based at the fairgrounds. Uh, last year's first Legends Festival was a big success and they're hoping to build on that. That's all I have.
One thing I would, um, remind on that is, uh, with the, the, the increased, um, TLT percentage that we just approved, um, we had made discussion that we were going to, uh, open, uh, considerable portion of that up for, um, annual grants, uh, for, for events and, 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 uh, local, um, you know, things like that. So, I hope that we can continue that and allow, you know, get that, get that ball rolling, maybe start getting some procedures prepared for, um, for July, uh, to get some of that going.
Yeah. Uh, maybe, I'm not saying exactly like, but similar to the ARP procedures we had, um, in, uh, in that, some, some type of a fair and equal process because I know, um, there's a lot of interest in, in various community events.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anyways.
That's it.
All right. So, next up is elected officials update. I see no elected officials here, so we'll move into commissioner update. Um, Commissioner Trost, you're up first.
Um, so, one thing I just want to keep on the, the, kind of the front of our brains a little bit is, um, you know, Director Fitzjub read off a bunch of the committee member openings. Uh, one of the committees that we want to look at, um, that I, I personally would like to put some time and effort into is the, the Natural Resources Advisory Committee, um, so we can be, you know, very active in, in upcoming stewardship plans and, and any natural resources, uh, discussions. Um, had we had that committee, um, I think we would have also had a much stronger stance with, with BOM when they were working on the windmill project, um, off our shores. So, um, I just want to keep that, don't let, I just don't want to let that fade. I want to keep that to where we can keep that moving forward. Um, one of the questions was posed earlier, um, about the, uh, the timber, um, executive order. Um, yes, that has, uh, that has things very much stirring in the timber, um, in the timber industry. Um, if people, if people aren't aware, um, Oregon is the number one producer of, of, um, dimensional lumber, plywood, and LP in, uh, in the United States. It's the number one, that's our, that is, that is our number one export. Um, and, uh, so, this speaks almost directly, some of this speaks almost directly to the ONC lands, um, which we have now, because the ONC lands have not been, um, being, um, utilized as they were intended, um, they've actually become what we are describing as a national strategic timber reserve. Um, and, uh, it was, it was evident by the president's executive order that he wants these lands opened back up and working, um, bringing lumber into our communities so that we stop, um, we export our lumber to China and we import our lumber from Canada. Um, and we're not building with our own lumber, it seems like, a lot of times. So, um, you know, stopping, stopping some of that and getting into, you know, um, getting into, really getting after it in terms of producing our own, our own lumber. You know, it's interesting, some people say, well, we don't have the capacity anymore. And this is one of the biggest things the ONC committee is really trying to push back on. We do have the capacity. We have the capacity right now with the mills in our own operation in the state of Oregon to increase production 1 billion board feet. We could, we can produce 1 billion more board feet of lumber a year, just with our, with our current infrastructure. So, we have the ability, we have the capabilities. To put that in perspective, to, to provide enough lumber to rebuild the Palisades in LA would take, the, the Douglas County Mills, three weeks to produce. Three weeks. It would take three weeks to produce enough lumber to rebuild the entire Palisades that was just burnt. Um, we have that capacity here. Um, so, point is, um, yes, there is a resurgence, uh, with this. We, we do have a, we do have a meeting, uh, later this month with the incoming Director of the BLM, um, to update her about the ONC, uh, contracts and agreements, um, and, and President Trump's, uh, obvious desire to fulfill that. And, um, in addition to that, the current acting director of the BLM is a Coos Douglas guy. He knows these lands. He knows these lands very well.
He knows the contract very well, too.
Yes. And so, he's also working to, you know, onboard the new director to, to, so we can get back to what is the most important term for the ONC contract, which is sustainable yield. Sustainable yield. Our current, uh, contract, to put this in perspective, is that by the owned, the, their own plan, the current forest plan developed by the BLM is they will, they will harvest 200 million board feet annually in our ONC lands. They've hit that target one time in eight years. One time in eight years. Um, the sustainable yield for the ONC lands is 1.2 billion board feet annually. And right now, we have not put, we have been, we, there has been such a lack of production that are, we are, we are so overgrown in that, in those areas that it would take us almost 20 years of continuous logging over sustainable yield to get back to where it was a, um, to, to, to a healthy, sustainable yield rate. Um, so, we, we're leaving billions for forest fires and everything else of board feet, um, dead, decaying, and, and dying, um, timber out there because we're not managing those, those lands. So, that seems to be being directed by executive order to get corrected. And I think we will see that, um, that will be, that will be a big advantage for us. Now, for this group, I do want to, I want to update you on something. So, we elect on what monies we're going to see on a two-year basis. We either choose, say, um, secure rural schools, SRS dollars, or we choose timber receipts. Now, we elected for secure rural school money because that's always been more than the receipts. But what we're fighting for right now is, with, at the federal level, is to, is to be able to have a reelection of how, which, what we want to receive because we expected that timber receipts are going to far supersede secure rural schools dollars going in these next two years. And so, we, we would like to be able, have the option to reelect how we want, what monies we want to receive. So, that's, that's one of the big things that the, the committee is pushing back on the federal government, um, to, to be able to do. So, there's some, some update.
I have some more update.
Do it.
Um, so, like, uh, Mr. Bay, when he was here during his public comments stated, um, I was in Washington DC last month for, uh, just a little over a week. I attended the National Association of Counties Conference out there. And, um, that conference, there are many subcommittees and being like a natural resources committee, or a health committee, or a transportation committee. So, depending on kind of what your interest is in at any given time, you can attend those, those meetings. You can even be a member of those committees to help lobby for the changes that you want to see happen, um, in your county, your state, your region, et cetera. So, while I was out there, I attended the natural resources, um, conferences. And within those conferences, they had several guest speakers. And several of those guest speakers were, uh, members of the federal administration. Um, Secretary Rollins, who's the Secretary of the Agriculture, who oversees the Forest Service, she was there and she spoke. Uh, the acting director of BLM, uh, was there and he spoke. The Intergovernmental Agency Relations Director for the Forest Service was there and spoke, um, along with several others. The message regarding what the new administration is doing is a complete, uh, modernization and reformation in driving efficiency within every single department in the federal government. So, Forest Service, BLM, the, the two, you know, that, that affect us here are going through a complete modernization and restructuring as we speak. They're also reforming NEPA, they're reforming the, uh, Endangered Species Act as well in order to, uh, prevent them from being weaponized, as they have been weaponized in the past. And one of the examples of, of that is, uh, in which they brought up was, a lot of the large and small environmentalist groups throughout the nation are solely funded through federal monies. A lot of them are. They take those monies and they sue the government. They take those monies and they sue the government under the guise of NEPA and the Endangered Species Act in order to stop a lot of the production in the timber industry. So they are working on addressing all of those. And there was a case, I know here recently where Greenpeace lost a lawsuit back to the federal government in the amount of $660 million. So again, that's just one agency or one group that does get funded by the government that has on several occasions litigated the federal government with their own money in order to get the federal government to lose and slow production. So they're addressing all of that right now. I have been attending some meetings here over the past month as well with some local collaboratives, you know, just opening the conversation regarding some cooperation and ideas in regards to making public or private industry more accessible in our forests to increase our industry and to help restore our forests through thinning projects or timber sales or reducing fuel loads throughout the forest. And we actually had a very good, Ted and I had a very good conversation last week with the Forest Service. We spoke with the Pacific Northwest Director, as well as the regional directors and local district rangers. And they gave us a lot of good information, and they're, again, willing to help out and work with us in order to accelerate a lot of that forest restoration that we have here to help boost, boost industry and help prevent massive wildfire in our county. So yeah, between what Commissioner Trost said and that, there's a lot of cards in place right now. We're waiting to see where a lot of these pieces fall in the federal administration right now. We're seeing the changes, and as things kind of get settled and there's some new structure in place, we'll be able to better know how to move forward on our end as well. So that's my forest update.
Nice.
And, you know, but before we keep going into other comments, did you have any other comments or any other stuff you wanted to get into before I got into anything further?
Go for it.
Oh, you're good? So listening to Mr. Fitzgerald's comments, I know we are in receipt of a legal case back from 2007, and this goes back to, is it Ms. Regsdell? In regards to the sheriff case again, and us trying to put the pieces together with pieces we don't have. So there's this case, it's Daniel versus Board of County Commissioners for Josephine County in 2007. And a lot of, well, not a lot of, but a portion of the back and forth between, or lack of back and forth between the commissioners and the sheriffs is who has authority over what and, and why? And as we all know, we have a declaratory judgment lawsuit out that we're still waiting to, to have happen. But this, this covers a couple of those items within our declaratory judgment. And that would be positions within the sheriff's department, who picks and chooses those positions and how those positions are decided to be, to be funded. And it's, it's been pretty interesting. I've gone over it with Ted a little bit. Do you, do you want to, you know, being legal counsel, do you want to elaborate a little bit more legally on this, on this case?
Well, basically, I'll just give you the quick overview. That case was actually provided to us by Teamsters 223 to clarify the roles of the commissioners with regard to that.
And the Teamsters 223, they're the union that represents the deputies?
The deputies, yeah.
For the sheriffs?
And so they were attempting to clarify the, the roles of, of the commission and elected department heads, including but not limited to the sheriff. And so that's what, that's what this case addresses. And basically, the, the, kind of the key to this particular case is that the sheriff has complete control of, of filling the positions within his department and managing the day-to-day business of that, of that department. That's what, that's the sheriff's role.
Hire, fire, oversee, and discipline?
And promote.
And promote.
Yeah, you can do that. The county commission has the authority to determine the staffing, including the staffing of deputies and, and everyone in the sheriff's office and every department within the county. That's, that's the county commission's purview. So, so the county commission determines the number of staff for every, every department. That's, this was a case that was, it was before the Court of Appeals back in, in Oregon back in 2007.
Is it, is it, is it the number of staff? Is it limited? Is it, is it, does it also include, like, what, what kind of staff? What level of staff? Like, you know, you can say?
The commission, the commission determines, determines the positions for each, for each department within the county.
So I printed this off, and it's referenced in the case as well. It's ORS 204 dot 601, and it's number and appointment of duties and other employees. It says, "The county court or board of county commissioners of each county shall fix the number of deputies and employees of county officers whose compensation is to be paid from county funds."
Okay. So if it's decided, we're using, you know, okay, that, so it gives a lot of clarity going into budget season?
Yeah.
If, if it's a debate on, you know?
And, and the second part of that, too, just for further clarification, is all such deputies and employees shall be appointed by such county officer.
Right.
And shall hold office during the pleasure of the appointing officer. So that, that just says sheriff can hire.
Okay.
So basically, based on that case law, when I made a recommendation last year?
Yeah. Was that legitimate?
That was to save deputy positions.
Yes.
We could have implemented that.
Yes, we could have.
Okay. All right.
And this case was, again, it was recently brought to us by the Teamsters that represent the sheriff's office, deputies.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that. It definitely provides some clarity going into the budget season.
It does.
Thank you. I know we have a lot of things that are still working through the declaratory judgment case that need to be clarified, but this is a big one going, this is very important going into budget.
There's some legal precedent here already, that it's already been sorted through.
All right. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So my update's going to take us in a very different direction, and I'm going to just jump right to it. Tonight, I am going to be announcing my resignation. I have some personal things that I need to attend to, and those things will require me to be gone for extended periods of time. And I know that not being present here every day, it would certainly not be fair to the people of this county, but it also wouldn't be fair to either of you. I mean, you guys show up every day, you work hard trying to solve this county's problems, and you need someone, a third person that's going to be doing the same. So I will make my resignation effective May 1st. My last meeting would then be April 15th. That should give the two of you some time to appoint my position, and it should also not interrupt our ongoing county operations. Uh, May 1st.
Your resignation's not accepted.
No, it's not.
We just...
We can make a motion on that right now.
Just deal with that.
Two-thirds vote.
Repoint you May 1st. No, I understand. And, and I understand that, you know, taking care of the priorities is, it's vital.
Well, I really want to say that, you know, it's an honor and a privilege to work with the two of you. Your work ethic is incredible. Both of you are very much invested in the future of this county, and, and it's impressive. And not, not being here and not pulling my weight alongside of you, that's not, that's not fair. That's not the way that I, that I can do things. And I also believe that the two of you, your vision is, it's a great vision for this county. And, and I just, you know, I want to make sure that you're being supported and have the things that you need to, to move a lot of these critical issues forward, so.
Okay, so now, thank you for that. And thank you, I mean, obviously, we have another meeting, so I don't have to go too deep, but your leadership has, has been, has been fantastic and steadfast. I, I'm kind of going into triage mode in my head real quick, and I think we need to bang some of these things out, so...
Yeah, I'm in a little bit of shock. Right now, so...
Thirty days, thirty days. So here's the thing, here's my thing on this. Brad, you, Commissioner Alcorn, you had, you had a very, you campaigned, you had a very successful campaign. You have a lot of people who are vested in your leadership. If it's possible, what I'd, what I'd like to see in this scenario is, Director Fitzgerald, if it's possible, you may have to, you may have to kind of put some guardrails on this. I don't know if it's, if we can, how we do this, but I feel that it's very important that Commissioner Alcorn has a say in his replacement. And I would like, because these are, this is going to be a person that represents the voters that voted him in, and I'd like, you know, if it's possible where, you know, by, if, if we know it's May 1st, we know it's May 1st.
May 1st.
We put out a notice tomorrow for people who are interested. By the 15th meeting, we could have those people come in, have them present. Brad, Commissioner Alcorn can give an opinion on who he believes should be his replacement. I don't know that he can vote.
I'll find out.
That's the key piece. And, but it would be effective May 2nd, right? That way, we, we're going into budget, we're not going to have any lapse in leadership. We won't have any, you know, we can make it, try to make it as seamless as possible. That also gives that person two weeks with Commissioner Alcorn for a really, really good handoff, well, as good as it can be, prior to taking in the role May 2nd. Is that all aligned?
Yeah, I don't know what the parameters are of my involvement in that process. And again, I'm giving you this timeframe to try to make this as seamless as possible and as disruptive, or to not be disruptive. So, but I don't know what the, I don't know what the rules are, what the, what the state regulations would be, what my level of involvement could be. But I will help this county and both of you any way I can.
Well, one thing we know is we can have those interviews by the next meeting. We can put out a thing and say, you know, hey, if interested, you know, send in this information. And whether or not you can vote, you can obviously have an opinion, and that opinion is going, I will tell you personally, the opinion that you have as your own replacement, representing the voters who voted you in, is going to weigh more heavily with me than probably a lot of my own opinions. So I would like that, it would be important, in my opinion, to have that feedback.
Well, again, I will do whatever I can to make this as seamless as possible, so, within the, within the law and within our county policy.
We can get that notice out tomorrow, and I'll, I think I'll just check with AOC to see what the normal process is on a situation like this.
Or maybe even the clerk, she probably knows.
Yeah, she'll, he'll know.
So...
Yep. And again, I will be, even if I, I will be absent next week, several days, but even in my absence, I'm available by phone electronically, that kind of thing. So I will continue to perform the duties that I have here.
Yeah, the only thing that, you know, I could say is, this is, obviously, it's a decision that doesn't come easy. So you, your family, whatever is creating this decision, you're in our thoughts and prayers.
Appreciate that.
My family is there for you if you ever need anything.
Appreciate that. And yes, this is not a decision I make by myself. It certainly is a, a family decision. My wife is obviously very, very involved in everything that I do, so, and it's impactful to her, too. So I thank you for that.
Yeah. Well, I thank you for all you've done.
Yeah, likewise.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, next meeting, I'll have something a little more prepared to say, so...
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion or comments?
You've got a lot of work to do this month.
I've got a lot going on, for sure. If there is none, then I will conclude the meeting, and it is 7:27. Thank you, everyone.